Call me on the order. Call Mr. Ross.
Mrs. Elder, President. Mrs. Poulter.
Here.
Mr. Macchio. Mrs. May.
Here.
Mr. Music.
Here.
Mr. Olbardo. Mr. Palmer. That resort. Excellent. Mr. Hawley.
Here. Solicitor's report, Mr. Nigga.
I have no report, Mr. President.
Solicitor's report, Dr. Tepper.
Just next week I will be sharing some information. If you have read a lot about charter school reform, the Pennsylvania Department of Education is welcoming public comment on the new reform. And I will have more information on that next week at the end of this week's update.
Thank you. Before we move on, I will have one announcement. We had executive session prior to the meeting to discuss legal and personnel issues. Education planning, Mrs. May.
Yes, thank you. And we welcome new students to afford the student report this evening. Jason Olbardo, Sophia Hope. And I'll turn it over to the two of you. Welcome to our meeting.
It has been the usual beginning of the year madness of the senior high. Last Thursday there was a driver education informational parents' meeting in the auditorium during the open house, which was a success. Student council did a great job of helping parents navigate their kids' classes and so forth. This week is picture week for each grade starting with a freshman yesterday, and any of juniors taking their pictures on Wednesday. As for the seniors like Jason and I, we already took our pictures in the summer. Lastly, the college fair at WCCC is coming up on September 25th. For the junior high, we also have junior high open house on Thursday, September 5th, where many parents and guardians came to meet with their child's teachers, gardeners, counselors, principals. We have our fundraiser kickoff assembly on September 13th in the afternoon. This fundraiser is organized by student council and raises money to provide funds for various activities throughout the rest of the school year. Lastly, we have picture day on September 25th, where the student body, teachers, and faculty of the junior high will be photographed.
All right, so the elementary schools. Kindergartners seem to be excited for the new buildings they're in. Thematically, they're having an internet safety lesson going to Blackburn Center, so it's just gonna for grades three to six. So they're just gonna teach them about, you know, internet safety and how they can protect themselves in their identity. Kindergarten open house at all three schools. A sixth grade camp meeting is happening on September 20, on September 17. This is four of them. It's all about it. And then at LES, there's this classic book fair. And yeah, it's all pretty much the same. It only emerged to us not much happening yet this early in the school year.
Thank you.
And then kids from, four students from High Post and Broadcast are going on display ninety-three tomorrow. Vice President will be there and they're gonna be in the press school. So we'll have the pictures back too.
Interesting. Thank you very much. Enrollment report, Mr. Frank.
Yeah, the third day enrollment report is attached. And that's accounting after three days of any students who were honorables that failed to show, et cetera. So that's, it's an important beginning of the year count. The numbers are there for you if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Sixth grade camp review. This is Melissa and Laura. Thank you. All right, this is where everything slows down. Everybody's in the mood really quickly. I don't have a powerpoint, which I let Jessica remember. I brought this time. So we have a few things that you can check out. Good evening, everyone. And I do want to thank you for having me here to discuss sixth grade camp information from last year and your ongoing support of sixth grade camp. It's such an important experience for our students. Something that they remember forever. And the younger students, as they get older, they look forward to being camp counselors. And hopefully, we'll see Jason and Sophia there. That would be great. Last year, we had a total of 284 students out of three of seven, which was a 92.5% percentage attendance rate over all three schools. And I'm happy to mention that this number also includes some students who are in the special support classrooms. It's wonderful to allow all of our students to come to camp and to experience those activities at their own level. Mountain View had 105 students, which was 96% of the sixth grade. Bagley had 79 students, which was 92% of their sixth grade. And LES had 100 students, 89% of their sixth grade class. During the day, students continue to participate in basic academic work in their books. They have美术arts, science, and stream study. They do math activities, social studies, art, music in the evening, sometime in the daytime as well, and a lot of different physical education activities. Students still love to participate in tie dye. We added an evening activity in our rotation on our outdoor evening of leaf rubbing, which the kids really are enjoying. And it's nice because we don't have to get a lot of equipment for that. They go outside, they find a leaf, we give them paper, and it's great. They love it, they make different patterns. And I'm amazed with what they've come up with, their creativity. Games and relays, kayaking, hiking, rifle and archery, all these things that we have had ongoing for years. We continue to do it at camp. The teachers and counselors are still sharing really positive comments with me about board game night that we started a few years ago. Kids are so used to doing video games, and sometimes they're sort of isolated doing that. And introducing, sometimes for the first time, a lot of the two board games. There's a lot of social, emotional, and educational value to that. I've been thrilled with the level of interest of the counselors to do that. They look for certain special games that they really like and claim them and, you know, "Oh, sorry, that's mine, that's one I have." So we just love that they like to do that. We are going to continue to use the book that's called Rec. This Germ that Paulie Willperson introduced to me two years ago. The students love it. It's, I guess it's a consumable, which is what you would call it in the classroom, because once we use it, it's a goner. And it's sometimes not even recognizable as a book. The woman that came up with Rec. This Germ is, her name's Carrie Williams, and she calls it a perfectionist nightmare. There are a number of different pages. Some are blank, some have directions. I've seen students dragging it with a string. I've seen them shooting it at the archery range and the rifle range, dunking it into the lane when they kayak. It sounds crazy, and they absolutely love it. They love it. Some students will come up to me on the last day and say, "Can I take this home? Can I try to find a plastic bag for them to put it in?" Because it's usually pretty messy by then. Last year was our second year of our outdoor cooking station where we make mountain pies. A lot of our students are familiar with that, but some are not. And so this is a very popular activity. Students, teachers, counselors, all really enjoy going to that station and getting involved with that. The camp food service provides us with bread, tomato sauce, cheese, pepperoni. And we have purchased the mountain pie irons ourselves, so we don't need to worry about getting those from camp. The Scouts and Heritage do outdoor cooking as an activity, and so we utilize the same space that they use, which is an open pavilion. So depending on the weather or the teacher that's running the station, and we have one teacher for each elementary school that stays there and runs that activity. There's an outdoor cooking pit, but there's also a grill indoors under roof if they want to use that. Our teachers, Nathan Oldby at Mountain View and Natalie Palmer over at LES, designed a new logo for our shirts last year, for our tie dye shirts that we give to students. I brought, this is one of my tops. I brought a shirt to show you what the logo looks like. It's very different from the one that we had before. This looks a lot more like a nature scene. You can see the mountains and the trees and the kayaking. Our teachers really like it. I think maybe they have a lot of camp shirts that look the same. These are the new camp shirts, by the way. So it was nice to have a little fresh update. And I will also, it's kind of funny that the printers said, "Oh, we really like your shirts." And I said, "Yeah, it's a great logo." And they said, "It's really easy to print, too." So that was a plus. They're also, they have also found some new brighter, different colored dyes, and the kids are really liking those. So it's a very popular station, as always. I want to thank Mr. Music for coming up again and working at the rifle station with us. It's so important to me that we keep strict safety at that station. And knowing that not only Josh Bowser is there, but Mr. Music is there, it gives me a lot of peace of mind knowing that that is a safe station. The students are learning gun safety while they are there. I'm surprised every year at the elementary schools, when I ask students if they know for sure or they're pretty sure that there are firearms in their house, it is well over 90%. And when I ask them how many of them have had any sort of gun safety training, it is under 20%. And so I give them a presentation on gun safety, and then they get some information on that for the station as well. Officer Dare came up to camp this year to visit with us. It's a beautiful day, and got to tour a lot of the camp areas, and got to shoot at the rifle station. And I wasn't present, but I heard that there was sort of a little contest. So I'm, I heard that he came in second. I am glad that he was there.
I think it was a tie.
Okay, we'll go with that. We'll go with that, it was a tie. So we've been doing the same old camp songs for decades. And the music teachers and I met and reviewed the old songbooks, and some of them, you know, were a little questionable and outdated. So we decided to go ahead and make new songbooks. We eliminated some of the songs. We added "The Alma Water," "America Beautiful," and a fun camp song that the kids all seem to know from Spinewalk. And then I found out that Julie Margaret Mills Snyder do a volunteer session with their students in their civics class. And so I got in touch with them, and we worked out an agreement where I made the covers and I got them laminated, but then I had these like 20 yards long sheets of lamination. And their students, as for volunteer hours, cut all the covers. And then once I had the books run off, I sent them up, and they stapled the front and back laminated covers onto them. So it was nice for them to have some ownership in the new songbooks. It was nice for us to get new songbooks, and both front and back covers were laminated, so they should last many, many years. One of the stations that teachers and I had discussed expanding was kayaking. But I talked with Terry Williams and Manish Meiling about ordering some kayaks, and we realized that we would need storage space. We'd need another trailer, because the trailer we have at school, we would need another teacher that would have to haul that trailer. And so what we did instead last year, and it worked out great, was they came up with a different way to have all of the counselors kayak on their evening. One evening counselors kayak, and the other evening they all tie dye together. So there were a lot of counselors. And so we found a way for them all to have the opportunity to kayak without us having to go out and purchase new kayaks. It worked out really well. We are going to start replacing the life jackets, and I will use the funds that we raised with our photo and DVD purchase to do that, like I did with the walkie talkies. Ten more new batteries this year, and we'll have all new walkie talkies and all new batteries for everything. The little thing about that, so we have the DVDs that we offer for sale, and we have an A-10 photo from each school. They're specific to each school, and we offer those for sale. And then the principals and I realized that there are a lot of people that don't have a DVD player anymore. And they might not even have an actual laptop with a DVD drive on it anymore. And we thought about going to a thumb drive, which would actually cost us more to purchase those, even involved, than it does to get the DVDs. So I did get in touch with Mrs. Pines, Dr. Pines, and I think, I kind of would like to think that we're still looking for another alternative to DVDs, but something that will still be secure. I'm not sure if we can manage that on our Google Drive. I don't know. So that's definitely not my area of expertise, but we definitely would like to look into that further. As you may have noted on the agenda, after I talked to the high school principals, we'd like to keep the new schedule that we started last year, where we have the full week coming first, and then on the second week, it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the students and the high school counselors are finished on Wednesday, which allows them to be back in plenty of time to do the elementary school walk, which they love and they do not want to miss. And so those are the dates. That's the reason they need on these dates. In closing, I want to let you know that we get so many compliments on our students from the camp staff, from the kitchen staff up there. The ladies in the kitchen, they can't tell me enough how our students say, "Please, thank you." They clean up better than the voice belts do. We're just thrilled about it. The Rangers say our students are nice to them and say hello, and we see them not in about. And that makes us, as teachers and principals, very proud of them. It's just, it's all good news. So I want to thank you very much for your time and your support of sixth grade camp. Mr. Frank.
Questions for you?
Yes.
How many years have we been going to camp?
I didn't look back, but I believe camp started in 1973, is that right? Seventy-five? You went first year. Charter member, charter sixth grade camp.
So what I want to say about-
So that's 46 years, is that correct?
Well, yeah. But here's what I want to say about camp. Over those 46 years, camp has endured different camp directors. Camp has endured change of location. Camp is a living, breathing thing that while we honor the tradition of camp, we look for ways to make it more relevant for kids, more modern. I just want you to know that we do the rifle range and did the rifle range maybe when Mr. Music was there, but we do it because it's still relevant for the kids. I will say under Melissa's leadership, she has truly reexamined everything that goes on at camp. She has been willing to make changes, put in the time, gather groups of people. And I will tell you, every year we lament the loss of someone at camp. "Oh, so-and-so's retired. I don't know how we're gonna do it without him or her." And the spirit of camp just lives on and creates one of the greatest experiences our students have as a part of their 13 years here at Gray尔Latrobe. It is just amazing to me. And it is one of the reasons I go up, I go up to see every school. I'm not there long, but I go up to see every school. And I try to take someone every year with me. One year it was Dr. Tepper, this year it was Officer Dare, and one year it was Mr. Music. And it took that one visit, and you just, you get sucked into what happens there. And it's just awesome for our kids. How many kids didn't go this year because they couldn't afford it?
Oh, zero.
How many kids couldn't go last year because they couldn't afford it?
Zero, that doesn't happen.
How many kids didn't, how many kids didn't go this year because they had some need that we couldn't meet?
No, we meet their needs, doesn't matter what it is.
It doesn't matter what it is.
That was not the way it was when I first got on this board. We were scrambling to find dollars to send kids who did not have.
I just, I just want to tell you, it is significantly one of the best things that we do. I appreciate all the time that you put into it, not just for those few days. But the, you know, so she has all these packets to put together. She realizes that we have a volunteer group. She reaches out and does that. So I appreciate what you do. On the flip side, you know, we talked about kids that go to camp. I remember Mrs. Powell spoke to me this year that there were parents who, for the first time, scheduled a couple nights away. Because their kid was at camp, they have no support system here in our area, am I right?
Exactly right. They plan, they're taught incident in kindergarten that they thought could go.
So we sometimes say, "This is the first time the kids have been away from their parents, and they need that experience." It's the flip side. I'm there to see how stressed they're feeling. You do a great job. You do a great job, you hide it well.
She's very mellow.
It's the current calls that come though. It's, you know, Jake's always committed to being a counselor, and all of a sudden, for whatever reason, he's gotta make up a test somewhere and lets her know the night before he can't be there. He would never do that.
I would let you know.
I'd like to thank all the staff that's involved and the principals. You guys do an exquisite job.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm there to say, and, you know, it's amazing.
It's amazing how everything comes together, the staff, it's a group effort. The kids love it.
I mean, I see all the kids as they go through that. You know, they're all giggles. And we do not have this problem. We do not have this. The sub board here, I have the rifle range. I've never had one this problem. And that's a true joyous story.
To your comment about people leaving, I did have in my notes, and I didn't say it. So we lost Tom Turnbull camp. Little grave of someone like scholars from camp. I'm hoping they get on the sub list so they can come train.
Tom Turnbull is in first grade today, so-
Tom, Tom already got, he told me he signed up for the sub list for his four age retirement.
Oh, that's hilarious. Wonderful. And I know I always send an email now in the spring, but I would love to have any wanting to school or come up and visit with us.
I agree.
Half the day, a full day. It will make it fun for you.
Take a day.
I can't control the weather, but thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much. So my conference and patient next on your agenda will be a resolution to approve the sixth grade camp program for the spring of the school year in 2020 with the dates listed. Also next week, Julie Jones will be here, who happens to be president of GLPIEF. And she's gonna talk about the grants and annual fund camp thing that's taking place. So that will be next week. Also, on your, next week's agenda will be a resolution to approve, to approve, to host Westmoreland Architectural Design Challenge. Thursday, April 7, 2019. And I think that should be June 20. But I expect it to be June 20. And April 3, probably April, November 20 at the Senior High School. My school credit for this grade will have all students do their senior high at this architectural design challenge. Thank you. I don't have a host of approval, I mean, a whole list of approvals for agreements, et cetera. There will be an agenda to approve the Seatonville University Hall Credit Agreement approved in the 2020 school year. There will be a resolution to approve the St. Vincent College BESD Transition Program for the 2020 school year. There will be a resolution to approve the Knight Educational Solutions Agreement for the 2020 school year. This one is new, I didn't recognize. I talked to Lori, and she informed me that it is an alternative education program. And while we have no students currently qualified, the state requires that we do approve a program in case of the devices in the school that's hurt to use. So you will be asked to approve this Knight Educational Solutions Agreement under agenda next week. Also, to approve the Maritie-Cutts Mania Grade Agreement and ESOI, where Maritie at school located at 116 Park Street in Manhattan, will also be a resolution. And that again, as I've gone back before. Also, to approve the St. Vincent College Prevention Projects for the 2020 school year. A letter of agreement for outside in school of experiment, experimental education for 2020 school year. That's also not new, I thought you could bring about it. Also, to approve Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Access Building Services for the 2020 school year. Also, to approve the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit DL Services Grade Agreement for the 2020 school year. And we did this one last year, too. To approve all Polly and Gray Speech and Language Agreement for the 2020 school year. And approve the Voice Bells of America Working for Life Memorandum of Understanding for the 2020 school year. To approve the St. Vincent Prevention Projects, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Underdrugs Use Survey for the 2020 school year. And lastly, to approve two tuition students, one from Montegoal, one from Greensburg, is listed by the area. The next break of the meeting will be held next Tuesday, September 17, at 5:30 PM. Your seats.
Thank you, Mrs. May. Finance committee, one of the agenda for your approval will be the treasurer's report, the payment of bills, and also to approve gifts, grants, and donations. Our finance committee will sell this evening prior to executive session. Next finance committee meeting will be Tuesday, October 8, at 5:30 in the Senior High School Library. Facilities operation plan, facilities operation planning committee meeting minutes from September 5 are attached. Our next facilities operation planning committee meeting will be Thursday, October 3, 3:30 PM at the Advent Building. Student activities or recreation, Mrs. May.
On your agenda next week will be the resolution to approve the dental exam nurse and exam costs for the 2020 school year. Sailor night review will be next week, five to seven years. And the senior nights where the ball sports are enlisted. And the next athletic committee meeting will be Wednesday, September 25, at 3:30 PM in the Senior High School Library.
Just, Mrs. May.
Just one other, Mr. Alver, my question. We just confirmed, and if you want to jot this down, Monday, October 14, will be Phil obviously in that. So that was the last one. Oh, did Jody get in?
Jody's on time.
Good.
It's on.
Community Relations, Mr. Ocasio.
All right, attached to your agenda is the meeting minutes from the July 18 Latrobe GLS, the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. And the next meeting will be held on Thursday, September 19, to 4:30 at the Latrobe Municipal Library. That's your report.
Thank you, Mr. Ocasio. Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, Mr. Banks?
Yes. The summary of the WNIAD board meeting minutes from August 27, 2019 are attached. And the next WNIAD committee meeting is Tuesday, September 24, at 7:00 PM in Port of Denver.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. EWCTC Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Music?
Thank you. The EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting begins August 14, our attach to board's agenda. And the next EWCTC Joint Operating Committee meeting, the Wednesday, September 25, and that will be 7 o'clock at EWCTC. I'm just going to keep going.
Absolutely.
And under transportation, the next transportation meeting will be Wednesday, February 2nd, and that will be at 3:30 PM at Senior High School.
Thank you, Mr. Music. Board policy, Ms. Elmer?
Thank you, Paul. I've been talking to Jody, and she's telling me that we'll have a ballot on the agenda next week, because we can cast a single ballot from the whole board for the PSBA offices. And also, you have updated information for the Secretaries Forum Steering Committee that just came in this evening. And there will be a second reading for the Board Policy on crowdfunding on our agenda next week. And there's a meeting tomorrow afternoon on the Board Policy, and I expect to be crowded out of the front by all of you. I'm going to the large conference.
Thank you, Mrs. Elmer. Technology, Mrs. Hauser?
Yes, Mrs. Hauser. The next technology committee meeting will be Tuesday, October 15, at 6:00 PM here at the Super.
Thank you, Mrs. Elmer. Superintendent for the base of South Denver.
Yes, next week, I'd like the board to approve professional personnel, substitute teachers, as stated, and some more will be added as we continue to interview, as well as approve support personnel appointments in classified classroom assistance, substitute recruit service, personal care assistance substitutes in classroom and personal assistance, as stated. To also approve teacher interposition for this school here at Bagley Elementary School. And I ask the board for next week to please move on the resolution that will be presented to make the correction in the salary of Diane Godwin, who was a health room assistant that was hired last month. The correction would be from $15.25 an hour to $17.25 an hour. Under other business, we have a lot going on. Tomorrow, if you are available at 5 o'clock, we will be hosting the Greater Latrobe Oral Valley Regional Chamber of Commerce, who have their business after hours at LES, ECSC. At 5 o'clock, please join us, it's open, it's free. Our homecoming is coming up, and I'm sure all the students are getting ready for that in the game at Memorial Stadium. And we will also have the Latrobe Wildcats alumni association kickoff dinner honoring our 1959 and 64 Bills Oxford's teams. That will occur at G and L Saturday evening, October 5, at 6 o'clock. We had spoken about Dr. G or Dr. Bilboa before, about coming and speaking with our students, and we are extremely excited to say, saying that she will be presenting to both junior and senior high students on Thursday, October 10. And she will give keynote presentations and then break out the small birds with our students at both junior and senior highs. Followed by that evening, a presentation for our entire school community and parents. And we are paragorying with Derry Area School District, I invited Derry to come out and have their parents and the community and teachers attend as well. So we are really looking forward to that, giving a big push for that. So, you know Jessica, we met today about if we are anybody to come out, and it's a phenomenal presentation. We have band night for football Friday, October 11, Memorial Stadium. And our class play, if you are interested in tickets, please see Mrs. Popowski, the Canoville Ghost Friday, October 18, and Saturday, the 19th, at our high school auditorium in Southern Hurry. And once again, the PSBA School Leadership Conference will be Helen Hershey, October 16, for the KFC. Please, if interested, see Mrs. Popowski so she can get those reservations and apply. Our upcoming board meetings, as stated, Center for Student Creativity, regular board meeting next Tuesday, the 17th, September 7:30. And our committee of the whole meeting Tuesday, October 8, at 7:30.
Thank you, Dr. Tepper. I want to thank you everybody for coming this evening, and we're now adjourned.